Okay, all right. Good afternoon, everybody. We're here for the Planning Commission meeting, June 13, 2:00 p.m. Can I have a roll call, please, from our clerk?
Yes, Mayor Burr. Joseph Nani.
Here.
Mayor Daley Jones.
Here.
Director Deber. Mayor Dowell.
Here.
Director Wong. Mayor Kurtz. Mayor Orkut.
Here.
Counselperson Simon.
I'm here.
Mayor Weiss. Mayor Weelo.
Here.
The other four.
Thank you so much. We have minutes from May 9. I hope we've took a peek at those minutes and if somebody can give a motion, make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Okay, first and second, all in favor? All right. Minutes approved from May 9. Thank you. Two resolutions today. Oh, did I miss something? Oh, sorry. Do we have that?
I don't know.
No. Michelle? Nothing? Okay.
Did I stretch? I don't know.
All right. So two matters, two resolutions. The first is 240613A. Can we get that read, please?
Yes, this is requesting approval of a professional planning services agreement with the City of Cleveland Heights to provide a gateway and wayfinding signage plan. We've got Rachel Novak here to present for us, senior planner. All right. So this is a very exciting application that we received as this round of planning grants that was going to be awarded funding. So really, the City of Cleveland Heights, ultimately what it boils down to, they're really looking to improve and enhance the ease of travel throughout the community. They mentioned a lot about, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic and how a lot of folks, you know, being out and about really started to take notice of, they want to make sure people know where they're going and that folks are aware of all of the great things to do and around Cleveland Heights. So really, some of the key points I wanted to highlight as part of their application, you know, they want to foster unified community identity through kind of that commonality amongst all of their signage, thinking about branding into all of their wayfinding as well, and to really help guide visitors to key destinations and attractions, again, really resulting kind of from the COVID-19 pandemic and really realizing maybe they were falling a little short and making sure people knew where to go and how to get there. They do have 11 commercial districts and neighborhoods that they really want to strengthen it, again, with that common branding through all of their signage. They want to enhance the traveler experiences by improving that ease and comfort. So again, as long as, you know, we want to make sure folks know where they're going so that way they feel more comfortable, they can, they feel more comfortable entering a space that maybe they're not as familiar with and their, the ease of using those different wayfinding signage, the wayfinding signage and mechanisms are very easy for folks to use. We want to create thoughtful signage in neighborhoods, especially in those that are low, moderate income. And we really want to provide this opportunity for the public to have that inclusive engagement opportunities and feedback. So we're going to be doing a number of community engagement pieces to really make sure we're hitting a home run on kind of the locations, the typologies, and the different types of recommendations that we'll be putting forth. So ultimately, what we'll be doing is county planning. We'll be kind of going throughout the community, inventorying what's there, what's that condition, what's the typology, what really speaks Cleveland Heights, really starting to identify kind of that brand and theme through their existing signage and set them up for success for that next phase, which will be the design phase. So once our work is complete, they'll be taking it out next year for 2025 for that engineering fabrication and actual installation of those signage, of those signs. So what we're doing here today, we're requesting the approval of a professional planning services agreement with the City of Cleveland Heights. The total project costs, we're estimating $75,000. We're contributing, again, through that planning grant application, $71,250. Cleveland Heights will be contributing not to exceed amount of $3,750, and we expect to have the work completed before June 30 of 2025.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I would just add that this is the last of the five planning grants to go ahead and move forward, so.
For this year?
For the, for this year, yeah.
And the maximum on those grants has been what? What's the?
It depends. What we try to do is develop the scope of work to determine what it is. So if you, some of them are, you know, we've had $100,000 or less usually. And then what we did is looked at the equity zones and the DEI piece to determine what percentage we would charge the community for the work and then what would be done in kind.
I think when we started, it was about $50,000.
Prices have gone up.
I know, it was shocking.
I think we had maybe it was, one of them maybe 125. I mean, it's definitely nothing typically for a master planner.
It's about double since when we started the grants. Okay, I want to recognize Wong here. Thank you for coming. Okay, so this is a standard agreement. Any, no questions? Some can make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Mayor Dowell, all in favor?
Hi.
All right. Okay, thank you so much. Next resolution, 240613B.
Yes, so this is another Cleveland Heights resolution requesting approval of a professional planning services agreement with the City of Cleveland Heights to provide zoning code updates to permit the construction of and integration of accessory dwelling units or ADUs within targeted zoning districts. And Rachel will present this as well.
So this is kind of the year of Cleveland Heights, really. Last year, I don't know if everyone remembers, but I believe it was July of last year, the board approved an agreement with the City of Cleveland Heights for us to undertake a really in-depth look and really look into the research behind accessory dwelling units. That report is now drafted and is available online for download, as you see here. So really, with that ADU research study that kind of preempted what we're talking about today, so we completed that partnership. And again, everything's in here in the document. It's a really great read. It's not only outlining, you know, very specific recommendations and kind of next steps for Cleveland Heights, it's also a best practices guide for other communities thinking about ADUs within their own municipalities as well. So within the document, we talk about potential, we talk about benefits, we talk about some of the concerns maybe surrounding ADUs, talk about those best practices, and we talk about zone, specific zoning and policy recommendations in the back of the document for Cleveland Heights specifically. So it's really going to set us up for this next stage, which is us, which is why we're here today, talking about those actual zoning code updates. So the city was ecstatic with the work that we did surrounding the actual research, and now they want to take that next step and actually implement these zoning code updates. So we're going to utilize the work that we've already done in terms of the research, and we're going to start to physically draft what that zoning language looks like. So we're going to be partnering closely with the city's project team and their legal team as we prepare that actual language, what that looks like. We're going to then take that language, once we're all kind of happy with how that is turning out, we're going to take all the, that language that we drafted and actually test it. Does it make sense? Does it work? Can someone do what we're saying it can do? So we're going to take those zoning changes and actually test it with existing lots within those targeted districts to make sure everything is correct and aligns correctly. Then we're going to be taking a review process and really making sure we're addressing any concerns from the city's boards. So we're going to be taking it to the Planning Commission. We'll take it to their ABR, their Architecture Board Review, and eventually City Council and obviously Public Comment.
Mayor, Mayor Weelo.
I have two questions. Rachel, when you talk about the actual areas that, you know, you look at zoning, is the city giving you carte blanche to actually look at the city and make the recommendation of where these districts should be? Or have they already pre-chosen areas?
So as part of the research study, there's actually three main districts that we're identifying. There's two single-family districts and then a two-family district that ADUs will be limited to. So we've really kind of addressed kind of where they are. It's just a matter of what that language actually looked like. It's really kind of this next step.
Do you think from this research and then after going through the implementation, you know, will you be able to use this then, like even communities like myself?
Absolutely. Yeah, I definitely think there, yeah, yes, exactly. I definitely think the document that is available online is a great example of the steps that you can take within your own community to go about a very similar process. And you can always come to county planning.
And I could, if I could just add to that, too. When we originally were scoping the work for Cleveland Heights and doing the research, they said in the very beginning that they want this to be a tool for other communities. So they knew having it done for themselves was what they wanted, but they were completely open to other communities utilizing it going forward.
And during COVID-19, I mean, I can't tell you how much of this, you know, people were asking it. There was no, you know, like no vehicle to grant it or to really look at it. And in some instances, you know, it probably really would have worked. So, you know, this is great.
Yeah, and thank you. And as part of this process, too, the research study, you know, we talked to a number of communities that have successfully implemented and are using ADUs today. So we talked to five different communities. We also talked to some folks of part of the National Realtors Association. We talked to our own fiscal departments to really kind of understand where some of those limitations are, maybe where some of the funding mechanisms, the financial side of things, where are the actual kind of the straws that are breaking the camel's back? Why can't people do what they want to do? So a lot of that is outlined in here. So.
I can't wait to read it.
It's a great tool for any community, especially in our area looking to do ADUs.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more slide.
You have a slide, right? What communities did you look at? What were the five other communities?
Let me just make sure I get them all correct. So we looked at St. Louis Park, Minnesota. We looked at Bloomington, Indiana, Anchorage, Alaska, Cincinnati, Ohio, and Minneapolis, Minnesota. So it's actually really interesting, and we've outlined all of their regulations here in a big table. And we compared and contrasted to existing regulations in Cleveland Heights to understand kind of again where those shortcomings are, where are the pitfalls, what's missing? Wow, how and where is Cleveland Heights missing the mark in terms of their current regulations? And it's really, really interesting, when we talk to a lot of these communities, how they went into ADUs much more strict, and over the years, they've rolled back a lot of regulations. So it was a really interesting dynamic to hear everybody, especially from Cincinnati. They were among the newest, you know, they just adopted their regulations like last year or early this year. I think it was, it was last year. And yeah, they took, they took note of that. And they, they're a little more, they're a little less strict than some of the other ones started. So it was really interesting to see. And a lot of them involved a big community engagement process as well. The ones that maybe started a little, not as strict, they engaged the public more early on to really kind of understand what they wanted and needed.
That's Mayor Weelo's question. Was this mostly led by?
Yeah, so when Cleveland Heights first approached us last year about doing this study, they have received a number of applicants wanting to come forward to want to do ADUs within Cleveland Heights. And obviously, there's nothing in place that allowed them. So I think there was a lot of public interest that really kind of sparked that. But I think it's also just kind of being ahead of the game in many ways, so allowing that regulation so folks can start doing it. You know, maybe even the city doing a demonstration project was talked about. So just making sure we have the regulations in place and hopefully that development will follow. But yes, there was definitely public interest ahead of time.
I have a question, but do you want to finish your?
Oh, sure.
Is maybe you'll address it.
Yeah, so what we're, what we're asking for today, just a request for approval of professional planning services with Cleveland Heights, again. Total project cost, $20,000. Contribution from the City of Cleveland Heights, not to exceed $20,000. And we're estimating this work to be done early next year, February 28, 2025.
What are the concerns? And now that it's loosening up as time goes by, do you see any real obstacles to incorporating ADUs in our communities?
I personally, you know, and professionally, I feel like a lot of what we've looked at in terms of the research, the benefits vastly outweigh the concerns. And I feel like a lot of these concerns are, you know, a number of them might be based more on community values and how the community looks and feels. So some of the concerns we identified, both through our own research and talking to those other communities, you know, changing neighborhood character was something that was brought up, kind of the design, the look, the feel of the street. But one of the other concerns is, could kind of be a positive thing, is difficult to meet zoning standards. So that could go kind of both ways. You know, people were concerned about density potentially, but definitely the benefits far outweigh the concerns. People were also concerned about the potential for reduced yard sizes. But again, a lot of that's happening in the rear yard. So how much of that is actually a concern? You know, that would involve some more community engagement, which we're planning to do with this ADU zoning update, kind of the next step in the process, so.
It was interesting. I was just talking with Wendy Muller, who owns her own consulting firm here in Ohio, and she was talking about some of the areas that she works in that are more rural and that some of the ADU requirements allow for, or restrictions or zoning, allow for an ADU that could be the same size as the main dwelling. So that if you've got a farm or you've got a big, huge lot, that you could actually have a family member move and build a house right on that that would be considered an ADU. But I do think, just in addition to the cost, increasing cost of elder care and some of these things, while we're thinking back to generations where families live together, that it really does give them some independence, but yet someone being right there. But, you know, I think that's a big piece of it, too, having to bring a family closer together, so.
So carriage houses in Cleveland Heights, a lot of those?
Yes, so the carriage houses that already exist in Cleveland Heights are essentially going to be continued over, and they can now be, you know, legal ADUs if the owner of the property so chooses. Carriage houses are certainly a unique circumstance in Cleveland Heights and some of our other communities as well, but they're far and few between. There's not that many properties that would really fall under, but that would essentially make them legal ADUs. Right now, they're legal non-conforming uses.
So are there NIMBY concerns?
We will find out, I guess, in this next phase. The actual flavor of the Cleveland Heights residents. But I really don't foresee that being too much of a concern.
There, right.
Yes, there, for that specific community. Now, if you were talking a different community, again, I think ADUs are one of those things and we start talking density, really, I think it's a little dependent on kind of the values and the flavor of residents in that particular area. Cleveland Heights, I feel very positive, and the reception we've received so far has been very positive. So I'm excited, once we actually start drafting that language and testing it, to hear what folks say.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Nice. Okay, anything else? Someone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, thank you. All in favor? Approved. Okay, thanks for your work. We'll look forward to following through up with that.
Absolutely.
Okay, information-only presentations.
Yeah, so that is all the action items today. But we are very, very close to releasing our new data book. And so we always like to give the board a little preview to what's going to be included. So Kevin Leeson is here to give a presentation on our new data book.
Hi, good afternoon. So we have our new data book coming out very, very soon. And I just want to start off by thanking our team. This was a team effort, would not have happened without our team. Dan's the manager of our little section and helped with a lot of our data and keeping us all on task and making sure we were ready to share it with you today. I worked on it, and Liam did all of the mapping for it, also obtained some of our data and did some of the desktop publishing. And Paul designed the documents and did a lot of the layout. And it was a great reality check for us when we were getting too obscure with our data. Rained us in. So this is our communities, the part of the data book series. The point of the data book series is to get data out there for communities, for residents to understand what's going on in their communities, make it easy to understand at a glance, and keep it regularly updated and current. We've used the data books in a number of ways. Internally, we've used them as part of our planning efforts. Whenever we start a new project, there's always a current conditions analysis. And a lot of the time is census data and other data that's in the data book. So instead of starting from scratch for each project, we can turn to the data book and get some basic stats for each of our cities or our communities where we're working. And when there's a need, we can dive further instead of going from the beginning each time. We know that other county agencies have also used this as part of their work. Local governments, both for the county and for local governments, used it for grant applications. And we know it's been used in the private sector, too, but we're just not exactly sure how. Every once in a while, we'll get an email saying, hey, we're going to update your data book, but we don't know what they're doing with it. The data book was recently featured by the Census Bureau. They have, they call them ACS data stories. It features uses of American Community Survey data. And since April, we've been the top story there. So when we revisit that ACS data stories, you'll see us first, which is nice. We're getting some recognition for that. The data book series started in 2020. And if you recall from the March presentation, we took a little detour last year, and we did the county data book where we looked at our county and 10 other peer Midwestern counties and compared those instead of looking at the community level. And now we're back to looking at the community level. It's been a couple of years since we've done that. We've divided the data book into six categories, and these colors are used within the data book to identify each section. And these colors are also part of the new logo and branding that we identified last year. So we're just being consistent and carrying that through our work. There is a new health section in this data book, which was something we had not included in the past. So each indicator, it has data for all of the communities in the county. There's actually 58 of 59 due to a quirk of the way the Census Bureau reports data. Shugren Falls Village and Shugren Falls Township are combined in the data book. And we also have summary level data for the state, the metro area, the county, city, again, and the group, the inner ring and outer ring suburbs. So that's for every indicator. And then we show those as maps between one and four maps for each indicator, a chart, and tabs of the data. So this time, we have 19 new indicators in the data book. We removed three but added 19. There are new indicators in every section of the data book. And anything else that was in there before has been updated with new data. And that new section, health data, has eight indicators, mostly from the Centers for Disease Control. I'll walk you through a few of these new indicators. One of these is diversity index. This is a formula applied to decennial census data. It does not show the levels of minority population. It's about the levels of diversity within a community. The formula will tell you, if you select two people at random, what are the odds that they are from a different racial or ethnic group? And you can see that that's concentrated on the west side of Cleveland and University Circle, Midtown Corridor, and down into Bedford and Solon there. So there's the top communities, the most diverse, Glenlawn, Cleveland, Cleveland Heights. And the bottom, the bottom of the diversity index, communities that are all white and communities that are almost all black. So it's a different way of looking at the race and ethnicity data. New development, the county board of health has a, board of health, I'm sorry. The county fiscal office reports on added taxable building value for projects that are over $1 million, new construction and additions. This is five years' worth of data, 2019 through 2023. And we've mapped it here by census tract. You can see the highest levels of investment are in downtown, the industrial valley, along the I-271 corridor. And if you look at those summary statistics, you can see that they were higher in 2019 and dipped during the pandemic and have recovered since then. Housing cost burden is another new indicator. This is, represents households that spend more than 30% of their income on housing costs. And you can see that the patterns are very different for units that are owned and units that are rented. Generalized zoning is another new indicator. We have taken all of the diverse zoning codes from county communities and grouped them into six categories. You can see that, obviously, the largest one there in yellow is single-family. The light green is multifamily. The red is industrial, the red is commercial. The blue is industrial. The dark green is public use. And the, what's the other one? The teal turquoise is the mixed-use districts. Length of commute is not a new indicator for us, but we revised how we're showing that. In the past, we just showed commutes of 30 minutes or more. And now we've broken that out into three categories. So we show commutes under 15 minutes in the turquoise, commutes between 15 and 30 minutes in blue, and commutes over 30 minutes in red. Our new health indicator from the CDC is physical inactivity. This is for adults who report no leisure time, physical activity outside of work. And like so many of these health indicators, more than negative outcomes are focused on our minority communities. So these are the communities with the highest levels of physical inactivity. And these are the communities with the lowest levels of physical inactivity. The way it's presented, Olmsted Township data is not included, so that's why they're at the bottom, zero. We are 99% done with the document. We hope to have that published early next week. And then we intend to follow that up in the near future with an online dashboard where people will be able to interact with the data on the road, yeah.
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you. Any questions? Our preview, Mayor. So, because I'm putting on my old RTA hat, have you shared the data about how many people and what the minutes are for the traveling to work with RTA at all?
This is, that's American Community Survey data, so that's available to anyone. So if they're not already aware of it, we can make sure that we share it with them, yeah.
Sure they do, but when they get, so they get blessed with it. This is very interesting to see for our own communities. It's going to be.
And we do have a couple of public transit indicators in the document. There's one that shows residents with access to frequent public transit and another one that shows workers with access to frequent public transit.
Yeah, so we'll be sure. I mean, we try and push it out as much as we can, but if there are boards or other things, committees that you serve on that you think it'd be helpful to share that information before we go live with it, we'll make sure we share a link with you so that you can share it.
It's going to be a great tool for us when we advocate, you know, we have different routes that kind of got axed down the road, but, you know, we can show. You know, they just want it back. If you can show some numbers, it could help for a new bus shelter.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our next informational update is Jennifer Karafa. So we're going to give you an update on our financials now that we are insanely quickly approaching end of second quarter already. So just with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Well, thank you. So I am Jennifer Karafa, and I'm here today to give you a very brief update on our financial situation. When I presented last in February, I shared with you our 2024 approved budget. Recall that we had county council's support to add appropriation to fully fund our operations and our existing staff in December. And then by March, I worked with the budget office to realign those additional dollars among our operational accounts where they were needed. And I also moved out the Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Grant Funds out of our operating budget. They're budgeted there, but they're managed elsewhere. So that left us with a total operating budget of roughly $2.1 million. Personnel costs are our largest expense, and they do account for more than 96% of our total budget. These personnel costs are comprised of both salaries at $1.564 million and about $464,000 in benefits. Now, this combined appropriation was intended to cover existing staff at the end of 2023 when we had 19 FTEs on payroll. And as of last week, June 5, county planning became fully staffed. So now we have a total of 22 filled positions with also a Cleveland Foundation fellow salary that's currently covered under another funding source, but with us and will continue with us when that term expires August 1st. I do want to note that our operating budget also included close to $69,000 for supplies, software costs, employee expenses, our contractual obligations, and chargebacks that, for county-provided services. Those are things like inter-office mail or use of a fleet vehicle, those types of things. In terms of our budget management, I think we all know that county planning continues to act as the fiscal agent for the county's Healthy Urban Tree Canopy program. And 2024 is program year five of this grant program. And we have another $950,000 available to disperse as grant funds as reimbursement grants. And as noted, while these funds are budgeted under county planning, the funding is appropriated and reimbursements are managed in a separate lifetime budget account, which is great because they aren't an operating expense. So right now, we're busy processing our PY 2023 reimbursements. We're ramping up for a new round. I will say we've had about an average of 24 awardees every year. So our team manages those dollars amongst, you know, two dozen entities. Keeps us plenty busy. So this is really the meat of my presentation, right? This table shows our year-to-date operating expenses and our commitments against our aligned budget. So as of page 12, which was issued last Friday, June 7, we've spent almost half of our total personnel appropriation. And this is without capturing our new hires' salaries and benefit expenses. As for our non-labor expenses, we have spent down about 44% of our total appropriation. We've spent as high as 92% on county-directed chargebacks. Don't have any control over. But as little as 9% in other operating, which was the least funded of all of our operating accounts. And then we've spent between 35% and 40% among our remaining non-labor expenditure accounts for a total of about $30,400. So that brings our total year-to-date expenses to $955,000, about $400. And so while this is a great snapshot in time, we do expect that our total expenses will outpace our current appropriation. And this is due to several factors. Okay, so primarily it's due to the fact that we are now fully staffed. We've filled vacancies that we've had in our books for a couple of years now, honestly. So given this greater number of users being fully staffed, we now have additional software expenses, license fees, and also higher professional development costs for membership dues that we cover and conference attendance. I'd also say it's due to inflation and just overall increased commodity costs. And this is both on the open market for things that we purchase directly, but also within the county as seen by those higher costs of chargebacks. On the flip side, county planning does continue to work with client communities. We administer state grant programs, and we're generating outside revenues. These are funds that we may use to help offset some of our projected non-labor budget deficits. In terms of next steps, we will again be meeting with the budget office once the second quarter ends. It's usually in July, and we'll take a look at new projections that OBM puts together. In the meantime, we'll be closely monitoring any account transactions and balances, potentially moving funds where necessary. We'll likely repurpose a portion of some of our outside revenues to cover some of those non-labor expenses that we didn't intend. And then certainly by fourth quarter of this year, we'll know where we stand in terms of any shortfalls of our personnel expenses, and we'll be advancing an additional appropriation request to council to fully fund that personnel deficit. So with that, are there any questions?
I'm curious, what is the other funding source for the interns you mentioned?
Well, the Cleveland Foundation provided funds, and they went directly to the Department of Innovation. And so.
So they're all coming out of there.
Correct. I will say, last year when it first started, we tried an arrangement where I would charge back and collect, and it was a mess. So finally, they said, we're going to move his salary to just draw from that account directly.
So his fellowship is up August 1st, so then we will take on his salary that we will have to cover. So he's going to keep him.
You're keeping him?
As one of those other employees.
He'll continue in the 22, so he'll continue as a senior intern.
Oh, so he's not a full-time employee that you had had on here?
He's on here, so he's been full-time Cleveland Foundation fellow.
I understand, but you said you filled your existing vacancies, but he's outside of the existing vacancies.
No, we always had at least one full-time intern. And so that was a bonus that we got the Cleveland Foundation to cover those costs of his salary for a year, so we.
But didn't you recently hire two planners? Maybe that's what I thought.
Yeah, correct. So we'll go, yeah, okay. But we'll talk about that. Anything else for Jennifer?
No, thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Onto the executive director's report. So I'll make it short, and I do need you guys to stick around for Beth's team so they can do their presentation. But just wanted to officially welcome, we've got our three new employees here. So Eric Engel, Alex Long, our two new principal planners, and then Madeline Gardner, who is our summer intern. So we are thrilled to have them. They have hit the ground running. You know, it's just been, Alex started the day off for Memorial Day, and Eric started last Wednesday, June 5th, on our TOD workshop. So he was anointed by fire and met a lot of people. But just really, I think, just a huge asset to our team to provide, you know, mentoring and other things and guidance. And just given their past experience, I think we're just going to be, you know, so much, at a lot of capacity to do more work and to continue doing the work we're doing. So just wanted to officially welcome, welcome them. So I did pass out the new updated org chart that you should have at your seat. And this is our fully flushed out org chart. So Madeline is here through the end of July?
Uh, August.
August.
July, yeah.
Yeah, somewhere there. So we likely may not fill a fall intern since we have Luke in that position, so we haven't determined that yet. Plus, we've got the two new principal planners. But really excited to have a fully staffed team. We moved some folks around and added some cue balls back. And so we are out of seats officially in our office right now, but it is a really great feeling and just great camaraderie with everybody. So welcome to you guys. You're welcome to stick around, or you can get back to work, whatever you want to do. And I just want to also give a big kudos to our team. These are projects that were our planning projects from the year before. All of them have been officially adopted by the cities. So Euclid, Fairview Park, Warrensville Heights, and Euclid. So it's just amazing, oh, sorry.
Twice.
Twice, Euclid, no, not really. Euclid, Fairview Park, Warrensville Heights, and Fairview Park, I forgot. I'm sorry, I put Euclid twice. But that's exactly what we want to see. We want to see the teams doing a plan and then the cities to actually adopt it. That's then their north star to start with implementation and advancing the work and the recommendations that are part of that plan. So my apologies. The second Euclid should be Fairview Park. And then also South Euclid and Maple Heights, the single-family zoning codes updates that have been made. We are seeing great momentum. Mayor is here, welcome to speak on that. But I think you're on par to see 130 new homes in the next couple of years. Maple Heights, same, over 100 new housing units, and that's something where we just have not seen that. When we look at, you know, building permits and new housing and new constructions built over the last several years, I know it's in the data book, but I think we had 600 less, something like that. I mean, now we're talking about 200 in our local, you know, inner-ring suburbs, which is fantastic, so.
I have to say, there's a project near where Sonny lives, and I just talked to the summers, to them this morning, and there's homes that are over $400,000 and $450,000 that people have come in and made this investment. And it, you know, Sonny can tell you, you know, during the foreclosure crisis, you know, homes are being foreclosed or people are walking away. And, you know, we strategically took down nine homes. And the homes there are starting at $300,000.
And it was quite controversial. I was on the city council at the time, and we approved the demolition of those duplexes. And we got a lot of heat and the mayor and the subsequent council but knew that at some point these lots would be developed. And now that's extraordinary difference in the neighborhood.
And they bought the lots at market rate.
Right.
So, you know, that in itself, you know, and then, you know, we have some more potential that hopefully will pop up in a year. And, you know, I just sit there and say to myself, boy, you know, this is, this just shows if you can prepare, when it opens up, you're ready. And he even brought up about how we made our whole community a CRA, remember that? And I forgot about that because we did that so.
It was on the council that's so long ago.
Yeah, I know. So I said it was like the things that he told us. So we did that, and then this new plan, yeah, we're in shock.
Well, the leadership of the mayor, also the relationships to bring in this developer, right? And it's not accidental that somebody wants to invest in the community, so thank you.
You're welcome. But, you know, it's a team effort. But the thing is now, now know that we're hoping that this developer will move into Cleveland Heights. Has had a couple of meetings with some people there, so let's see what happens. So thinking about Concord and Chardan and, you know, Way East, so this is pretty amazing.
I think that's really where we're at right now, taking the time to be proactive and lay the foundation so that developers, they may not be coming there because they know you change your zoning code, but once they get there and they do a project, like, wow, that was easy, let's build more. And so.
Do you know anyplace else?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
The inner-ring suburbs.
So I just want to congratulate your leadership, you know, Mayor Blackwell and all the communities that are really looking to get those new housing units put in. And I do hope there is some balance with the affordable housing piece of it as well. To try and, you know, hit some of those as well, but. So we can go back to the slides, but I think too, the next thing, which kind of was related to this, but we had a transitory development zoning workshop last week, last Wednesday. Our county executive was there to welcome the group. And I will say, since he is a planner at heart, he stayed for the majority of the meeting. And, you know, a lot of his chiefs and his team were there to kind of learn on what we're doing. And I will say, one community has already reached out to us and asked if we could help them with applying the overlay in their community. So this is what we want to see, is we do the work to do the overlay text for zoning codes, and then we help take it local. I think the big takeaway from that one is it doesn't all have to be the same type of TOD. There really is that robustness or less robust and somewhere in the middle. But it does call to the point of density, and we're talking about trying to increase our, you know, residency in our communities and our population, giving people options that are located near transit, not just for those who don't have a choice, but those who do have a choice and decide that transit is the way to go to connect with employment, to come along with, you know, amenities. So really happy, so proud of the team and all the work that's being done. We're already starting on our next steps, and we are talking about doing a developer survey to really find out if you're not doing housing along these corridors, why not? And what can we do to try and figure out more of the carrot rather than the stick? But I know that, you know, there's a lot going on at the community level. We asked those at the workshop to identify sites along these priority transit corridors that might be opportunities for TOD. And I think again, you know, and RTA is making investments on these priority transit corridors. And if we don't change the density along those routes, we're never going to increase the ridership. And so it's always this, you know, in tandem win. So happy to have all the partners participating in that. And your team's been fantastic on all the zoning changes that you guys are doing. And really been, great to work with the city of Cleveland and your team, so thank you for that. Yesterday, I did participate in the APA Nationals virtual planners day on Capitol Hill. So last year, I went to DC for that. Yesterday was a virtual meeting day, and I'll tell you, the meetings were fantastic. Everything we've talked about, from zoning reform to housing to ADUs, the staff that, for Sherrod Brown's team, Chantel Brown's team and JD Vance's team, they were very well-versed on this. And they are hearing nothing but concerns from their constituents about housing, about zoning, and how do we, you know, it's holding back some things to go, the financing, the money. And so really, really great meetings. I actually got an email follow-up from the staffer at JD Vance's team to say, hey, can we set up a time to talk? I have a few other things I want to talk about. I'm like, these are the relationships where we've got bills like YIMBY, we've got bills like Yigby. I mean, there's all these bills that are sitting there. And so whether it's a lot of bipartisan momentum to really make some changes. I know Chris Alvarado was in Columbus yesterday meeting with some folks with the mayors and managers and Senator Reynolds, who had held up the Senate Select Committee on Housing, was there. He actually shared some of our TOD work with her. And so, I mean, this is the stuff where it may seem like we're just in the background doing this work, but it really is meaningful, and it's really going to change the future if we do this right. And having, you know, elected officials be educated about the work and being able to implement that is going to be really, really significant. So very good day. I think as a group, the APA National group, we met with 99 offices during the day, and 25 states were represented in the group that was participating. So really impactful for planners day yesterday, so excited.
Good job, mayor.
Oh, I have one foot, I'm sorry, I forgot, I got it back. All right, so this is my last one, but as you know or may know, we talked about annual reviews. They are currently underway right now, and I just wanted to share with you, because I love to brag about my team, but part of our annual review process is a 360 feedback component. And so I wanted to just share with you the overwhelmingly positive responses that we get about our team. And so these are like the main characteristics that drive for results, communication, relationships, teamwork, leadership, and technical capabilities. And as you can see, that dark blue is outstanding ratings. And so they are amazing. They are doing great work. They, I, you know, love to partner with the communities and really engage with your residents. So the majority of our feedback that we got, you know, really was outstanding or exceeds expectation. We got none of the below expectations or unsatisfactory marks. And so I value everybody who was asked for feedback. It was inside and outside people. And so really a valuable part of our process and helps me realize not just what's happening inside, but then how things are perceived outside. So I just wanted to share that with you as well.
Great. Did you do that for each of your personnel?
Yes, so everybody was able to submit three names for me to reach out to. It was all confidential. We did Google Forms, and it was just a series of questions that came in, and then I was able to bring it to a spreadsheet. And we used Survey Monkey in the past, and it was not as friendly as the Google Forms process. So thank you to Kevin for setting that up. So we did also, which I don't have here, but the other piece that we did for the first time last year was a reverse evaluation. So we allowed staff to provide feedback on their direct managers. And so that was really great too, to see how people are feeling. And unfortunately, we didn't get 100% participation, but, you know, I mean, it's confidential, but sometimes depending on the comment, you can figure out who it is. So I think we're looking to ways to continue to improve that. So last year, we really followed kind of the same 360 questions, but this year, we really tailored it to, you know, how supportive do you feel your manager is? Are there areas that you really appreciate, how they work, or things that could be different or improved, and just some general feedback? So it was very short, but I think it was its valuable feedback to go through the process, so. Okay?
Thank you.
That's all for my report.
Thank you. Great. Any questions, comments? Great job, Mary, and team, staff, congratulations. So that's all business to business, pretty much?
Yep, nothing.
So at this point, I'm going to adjourn at the Planning Commission Board meeting, and then we're going to move into the Sodways Policy Committee meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't leave. As we discussed last time, it's always scheduled immediately following, so we don't have to wait until 3 o'clock.
Okay, oh, for sure.
Just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody here from Sodways. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Sorry, missed you last night.
That's okay.
You want to take?
Oh, yeah, we have to restart. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Mayor Burke? Joseph Nani?
Here.
Mayor Daley Jones?
Here.
Director Dever? Mayor Gallo?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
Mayor Kurtz? Mayor Orkut?
Here.
Councilperson Simon?
I'm here.
Mayor Weiss? Mayor Revo?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Ms. Wimmelhuh?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we are here today to, if I can do this, do I just aim at the screen?
Yes, switch the screen, sorry, go to that left one.
We're here to continue talking about our Sodways Plan update, which we will be sending to you prior to the August meeting in its entirety for you to review. And then hopefully recommend sending the draft to the OEP. Today's agenda. We'll be reviewing the nine last appendices that we have to go over with you and then talking about the next steps of the plan.
So this slide is just a reminder of the schedule that we are following in order to draft the plan update documents and submit them to EPA. When we last addressed the policy committee, we were here on April 11th and presented a lot of data from Appendix H. That's the analysis appendix. Some of what we're presenting today are the conclusions of that Appendix H that are in I. And we'll go over some of these other appendices in this meeting. But the important, very important piece that you see highlighted in yellow on here is the next policy committee meeting where we need to have a quorum in order to get approval to submit the draft plan to the OEP. So just to go ahead and lead into the Appendix I, these are the conclusions, priorities, and programs, all the results of the strategic analyses that occurred in the Appendix H portion of the plan preparation. Some of the conclusions that we've been able to draw, demonstrate through the statistics and data from the district is that post-COVID-19. and data from the district is that post COVID-19 recovery is trending upward. The numbers are starting to increase again to rise back up out of that dip. Some of the adaptations that the district made during COVID, where they took their learning and education and outreach activities online. They're merging those online opportunities, reintroducing in-person public opportunities. So all of those efforts are increasing opportunity and trending recovery upward. We've learned that there are, there are more MRF facilities that are coming online. Waste Management's facility in Oakwood is in operation. Rumpke is opening a new facility in Columbus that's increasing their throughput capacity. So all in all, there's available capacity that exceeds the needs of the district. There is more demand for recycling beyond the general cart recyclables. And that includes food waste, yard waste, other hard to manage and specialty waste such as batteries, some propane tanks, textiles, fluorescent bulbs. The district had a talk trash lunch back in, I believe, January. And they learned a lot of these items were of interest based just on community feedback. They also learned at that meeting that the communities would like to have more collections of litter. And the open dump control, there are currently two crews that perform that service. So this plan contemplates the addition of a third crew and what that might look like. And then also the exploration of additional drop off opportunities for items of interest that would include fiber and glass and other materials. So some of the priorities from the current plan that are moving forward are the grant programs. But with some restructuring, there are three grant programs. The district is looking to do some restructuring within those three, but also create an additional new grant opportunity for schools and universities. They're going to continue the recycle right education. This is consistent with the OEP format in using a consistent repeated message. So recycle right is consistent with what EPA would like to see and it's effective. They also want to expand a research on hard to manage recyclables, which include again, food waste, glass and textiles.
A little more about the programs that will be, we're continuing and moving forward. You know, we heard from our outside stakeholders, the service directors, that technical assistance is something that they appreciate when it comes to contracting for their recycling and other solid waste services. As Amy mentioned, grant programming is a favorite for our communities. We heard loud and clear that they wanted us to continue that. However, they would like us to consider changing the things that are eligible for funding and the amounts that are applicable for those eligible items. Things that are a bit more operationally oriented, there was an expressed interest in, for example, balers for cardboard, purchasing of carts, other infrastructure. So we will be looking at doing that. We will be moving the Environmental Crimes Task Force forward and expanding their hopefully reach into the community. We will continue to promote the Ohio Materials Marketplace. That is a database that is housed on the Ohio EPA's website and is really a tool for businesses. For example, it's, I call it a matchmaking service. So you can list us a business materials that you are producing as kind of at the end of your process in hopes that someone will find that that residual material that you have to get rid of could well become a feedstock for someone else's operation. And we will continue to promote that through our business educator. We're going to continue that program. Our, our business educator does a lot with our local businesses and helping them right size their waste contracts, implementing recycling and reduction opportunities and other programs. We will be continuing with our Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program. That is a perennial favorite of our communities. And we will be obviously continuing to update our website with all of the educational opportunities and just information on how to manage your materials. We will continue funding with our health departments, both City of Cleveland as well as County Board of Health. We have contracts with both that help us inspect all of the different types of solid waste facilities. So construction demolition debris, composting, open and closed landfills, transfer stations, and also nuisances. And then we will be bringing forward our litter collection program, as Amy mentioned. We also heard from the stakeholders, they, they very much like that program, but would like to see the capacity of that program expanded. So we will be doing that.
If I may just highlight real quick, one of the business education opportunities that the district launched at the end of 2023 was the Business Resource Champion Campaign. And the educator, you know, put together a fantastic program, the district as a team, to recognize businesses that have made a strong commitment to eliminating waste to the landfill and in general by recycling and composting. Their whole mission is to keep valuable materials in circulation. So that's just a great new program that we're looking to highlight.
New programs that we're looking at, we mentioned a couple of times now, the revamp of our existing grant program. So we're looking to add dollars to all three grant programs, adding a new grant program. And again, we kind of prioritizing allowable items that would have an impact on operations and thus reduction activities. We want to focus more on food waste, education and drop offs, supporting technical assistance with our communities and our businesses for that matter, for creating the infrastructure for that. We also want to continue our efforts in improving the infrastructure for handling that food waste diversion. We talked with our service directors and there is interest in promoting additional drop offs that could serve us businesses, single family and multifamily. And these would be very specific, single item drop offs. And here we have listed, for example, single item drop offs such as cardboard only or glass only. So we're looking to, you know, analyze where we can put those, how we can fund those for better collection of those very valuable materials. You know, we're looking to continue harmonization between our website and our printed collateral. As Amy mentioned, we need to say it, say it and say it again. And so we're, we're looking to continue that activity. And we're also looking, kind of with that harmonization, we now have an opportunity with one, one of our material recovery facilities. We're hoping to establish with a second, establishing regular tour opportunities. We believe that, you know, a picture or an in-person visits more moving than anything we can describe to orally or in even static printed material. So we've begun taking tours through waste management and we also hope to do that with Republic Services. So. And I'll let Amy pick up on the last couple of points.
Sure. The education campaign, you know, when there's community switches to a new hall or we want to make sure that that is consistently shared and that residents and those in the community have access to the most current information. The district does a fantastic job of keeping their website up to date. You can search not only by item that you're looking to recycle, but you can go straight to the community and recognize immediately what those nuances are for that community's recycling. We'll continue to educate and then would like to explore how to demonstrate to the community the impact recycling has on the economy. There's job creation, there's new commodities created from the recovered commodities. So that's a component we'd like to highlight. To also promote the use of shared tables as a low cost way to reduce food waste in cafeterias, slow hanging fruit, so to speak. So looking forward to exploring that opportunity. And then with textiles, it being a talked about enough and emerging kind of opportunity area that it's going to warrant its own analysis to see if we may draw some recommendations on what to do with that moving forward.
Question. So, you know, so many people watch those morning shows. They only see it if I'm at the gym. But so many people, you hear them talking about Kenny Crumpton and this one and that one, right? I mean, and as you said, you know, a picture is a thousand words. But if you could get on some of those shows and really talk about recycling and they really see a face to it, I think it'd make a big difference. I mean, they know in our communities, you know, when we're out there. But, you know, there's, and I'm sure you know, there's the trust after us is, is it really going to matter? Mayor, is it going to really matter? And I can tell you that our battery recycling has gone crazy because we were able to, you know, talk, and you know, your education people came out to our city and we hosted it with University Heights. It was huge crap. We filled the community center. So, you know, a lot of people for the first time actually saw somebody besides just reading something online or having one of us. Having the education person changed so much. And they got to raise their hand and actually get a question answered. And it, I was quite amazed, I think we did it in February, like when it's kind of slow. But it was so well received. And I saw a whole shift in the room, a whole shift. I was quite surprised. So I don't know, when you talk to your consultants, I don't know if there's a way to have more of that. Whether it be on NPR talking, being on the morning shows, whatever it might be. I think the fact that they're hearing more than just us, you know. I still have people walk up to me and say, you know, they said we could take that envelope with that, you know, that plastic, you know, window and they could put it in there. And, you know, you saw it all came up to the top and my husband's still arguing with me. You know, and I'm like, don't worry, I'll make a call. But, you know, it's that kind of stuff that, you know, people were like, aha, we really can do that.
Yeah, we've seen it.
It's amazing. It was a great presentation. It was fun.
Well, thank you. We, we have begun to return this year, this year meaning 2023. We saw a 50% increase in the number of in-person presentations we did over 22, which is great. I think, I think it's as equally important for our staff as it is for, you know, our, our communities. I think everybody's just tired of, you're right, a Zoom or a Read. And, you know, I happened to be out in Lynnhurst last night. And it was a wonderful, you know, presentation. And you're right, it's an opportunity for people to raise questions and ask about, well, we had a question about spaghetti in a jar.
I know, I know.
So it was a great conversation.
That and I were on Liam Bibb's thing, remember, we did that? That was fun.
It is, it is.
Yeah.
I love what Kenny Crumpton announced, like, idea at the new facility that you were talking about last time.
We, we can definitely look into that.
You know, he's so funny.
Yeah.
And, you know, people, see, the odd, the odd thing to me is it's like, well, you trust your mayors for telling you to recycle or whatever. But then it's always like, well, I don't know if it matters because after there, nothing happens to you, you know, so.
I was going to say, to add to that about going to a MRF, one of the, I think the most powerful things I did in part of the master recycling program was to visit a MRF. So to that point, I've heard people say too, well, where does it really go? I've seen them dump it in the tre, you know, whatever. But when you see, when you think about, you're throwing in this, this a couple of things. But when you go to the MRF and you see bales of, you know, plastic and you see the effort that it takes when you put the wrong things in there and there's human beings that have to kind of like, it's like, you know, Lucy in the Chocolate Factory, you know, pulling these things off of the conveyor belt and all the work that goes into that. It just motivates you more to, to recycle correctly. But it's more the power of how much stuff there is. And so you think you're not doing that much, but it ends up. And I, I thought that was the, one of the coolest parts of the whole program. And that was right in the beginning, so.
Yeah, we're, we're very pleased to have, in, in our district, you know, Waste Management's now within our district, which is great. And we've been in talks with Republic to see, you know, just for a different perspective. Now, they're in Lorain County, but we're, we're trying to convince them. Everybody put all of that on hold unfortunately during COVID. So we are finding it as, I think, as refreshing as some of the people we've, you know, now taken.
Do you have more slides?
Yes, we do.
Hold your thoughts. You're only on 50, I think you have 58.
So the next piece is Appendix L, which is the education program demonstration. And just wanted to point out that Appendix L addresses Goals 3 and 4 of the state plan. Goal 3 requires that the district provide four specific programs. They need a website, a comprehensive resource guide, an inventory of available infrastructure. So that's where can I take what material? And then a speaker or a presenter opportunity through the district. So the district has all those. This plan just highlights how they use those platforms for the education and outreach. And then Goal 4 talks further about how those offerings reach the different audiences. There's five target audiences. You've got residential, schools, industries, institutions, commercial business, they're lumped together, and then communities and elected officials. The state plan requires that you select programming through implementation of best practices. So not only do you need to understand what infrastructure exists so that you can properly promote it, you can see what areas you may be lacking in infrastructure. So then you could focus some attention in creating infrastructure where needed. You want to focus on how to get people then to use the infrastructure that you're helping to promote. You need to understand the audience differences so that you are talking the appropriate language to the appropriate parties. You want to speak to the core of what they're interested in so that you can strike to the heart of getting them to pursue those opportunities for recycling. They'd like, the, the focus beyond changing behavior, you know, we've heard the message over and over again to some of the points we've been discussing in the room. You hear it, but how can we reinvent it so that we reinvigorate interest in changing behaviors to do more? And then of course, measurable outcomes, that same consistent repeated message. And then how can we evaluate the results? How, how could the district take that information, translate it into a format in which you can see progress? One of the ways in which they do that every year is the annual report. And they put together by community, the statistics and so forth. So they have some existing reporting programming that they can just add that information to to further demonstrate how that effort is working. You'll see the different programs on the left, the target audiences they hit. And, I mean, honestly, we, we couldn't make the list long to include every program that they offer. But some of the newer programs that have been very successful include the Reduce, Reuse, Repair Fair. They just had their second annual event this spring. So those will be specifically mentioned as well, demonstrating the success the district's had in achieving some of these required elements.
And, and just to kind of finish up about required elements, you know, we will be continuing for that outreach and education priority that we have to meet per the plan, continuing with our recycle right campaign. And we already are aware of the fact that, you know, our, our industry never stays static. We'll be adding. We'll be adding new materials to what can be recycled as end markets come online. We've already been given a heads up that we may be adding another new item that we can all recycle before the end of the summer. So we, you know, look for that.
Don't tell.
No telling.
No telling yet.
Can't tell yet. It's sworn to secrecy. But, so, you, you know, again, we'll be adding new icons to the webpage, reaching out to, you know, identify, you know, let everyone know, guess what? You now can add this, you know, these couple of new items to your recycle cart. So, and obviously, as Amy said, you know, we, we track, you know, through our, the tonnage that all the communities and the businesses recycle. That helps track our progress in, you know, getting our messaging out. Plus, we do track internally. We have a variety of metrics from the web, from all of our social media platforms. And we have continued, again, into, through 2023 to see increases in our followers and our views.
Next up is Appendix O. It contains the financial data. And what we're going to run through for Appendix O is just a quick review of the revenues, expenses, the programs that are being discussed that will impact budget and then what the projections are for ending fund balances. So the first slide is just a demonstration of the financial history of the district, district for years 2018 through 2023. The green column on the left demonstrates revenue and the blue column on the right represents expenses for each year. You will see those lines are pretty consistent where revenues and expenses are pretty close to each other. But we did want to note in year 2019, there was the building acquisition. That's why you see expenses higher than revenues for 2019. And then in 2023, you're seeing the demonstration of the increased revenue from the generation fee being increased by 50 cents per ton.
With our new programming, will come some new expenses. We are anticipating in, you know, 2025 to have an increase with the software that we utilize for our annual district report, which is the mandatory report that we have to give to the O EPA. And that also helps us populate our residential recycling report. Inflation has been felt there, as you heard earlier in, in the planning commission meeting. We are looking to increase the funding for the Environmental Crimes Task Force. We now have a deputy from the Sheriff's Department on board. And so we are looking to increase the annual funding for that moving forward a little bit to help cover, you know, just things such as cameras, tactical gear. In 2025, we are looking to hopefully replace our rather old vehicle, our Saturn. We have, it has been a faithful servant to us, but it is probably.
No cards, too.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that is true. It's, it's, it's probably best that we, we look to replace it before we're in a situation where we're, we're faced with an absolute emergency situation. We will keep staffing static, which is good. So we're looking to do a little more with our current staff. As we mentioned, adding a third litter control component to that, which would probably cost the district about another $60,000. You know, we are looking to do the textile evaluation in 2026 and, you know, also revamping the dollar amount associated with the grants. So you'll see in these upcoming charts, a bit more expenditures to facilitate the new programming. Now, in, in the plan, you go, oh, my gosh, 2040, who's going to be here? Jessica will be. Anyways, our solid waste plan covers a 15-year planning period. And we are required as such to project revenues and expenditures out to the conclusion of that 15-year planning period. Now, we update our solid waste plan every five years. So that's a rolling 15-year window. So as odd as it sounds, we need to show, you know, a balanced budget, which this does not show. You'll say, wait, 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 you know, by the time we get to 2040, we're not quite in, in balance. But, you know, what we are looking to do is possibly, this is not a for-sure thing, but possibly in 2028 to 2030, possibly increase the generation fee another 75 cents. That will all be dependent upon the actual costs of the new programs that are implemented, other inflationary factors. But we can't submit a budget to the EPA that doesn't show that we are in, in, in an equilibrium state. So you'll see, we're getting into our fund balance a little bit. We then towards 2034, increase our revenue and then we begin to touch into that fund balance again. We do make it a point to keep about a year's worth of operating costs in our fund balance as just being good stewards of, of our operations.
When you guys are changing slides, Joe and I have to leave in about 10 minutes. So just so you know, if we leave. For the policy committee?
We have three more slides.
Okay, so you get three slides done, then we'll vote on.
Okay. Okay, you're next.
I'm open. It's quick.
Okay.
Okay, so Appendix M is just, we have to show that we have enough capacity at the landfills to host our waste. We've got, you know, like 1.2, 1.3 million tons of waste usually every year. There's 42 licensed solid waste, there's 42 licensed landfills in Ohio. 37 of them are municipal solid waste landfills, five are industrial solid waste. In 2022, we sent our waste to 17 out of those 37 municipal solid waste landfills. And the combined average of the landfills we did send to is approximately 56 years. So we have plenty of capacity for our waste and will continue most likely. So. Appendix N is the WARM model. So the WARMs, if you aren't familiar, it stands for the Waste Reduction Model. It's a comparative tool that was developed by the US EPA for solid waste managers to estimate and compare greenhouse gas emissions, energy savings, economic impacts associated with different waste management options. And with our current diversion programs, we have been able to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 694,237 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. And we've got some stats on this slide below to show that we removed annual emissions from 147,396 passenger vehicles. We conserve 78,118,262 gallons of gasoline and 28,926,541 cylinders of propane used for home barbecues.
Wow. That's why we gave her that slide, she articulates the best of all of us.
This one for me is very quick. So we put on the same slide appendices P, Q, R, and S. They stand for designation, the district rules, example survey forms, and the citing strategy. And those are not changing from the prior plan. It's a carry-through with the same mechanisms as current plan. Which brings us then to our last slide, which is just a reminder where we are in the calendar. Today's June 13. The next opportunity for us to get together with you all as a solid waste policy committee is August 8. Beth had mentioned the draft of the plan will be shared with you the week prior. We'll be prepared that day to answer any questions and hopefully then the district can get support to certify that draft to the EPA. And a quorum is necessary for that.
And when you receive the copy, you, you will panic based on the number of pages. The way the, the plan is set up is the chapters provide kind of an executive summary. The appendices, which we have been, you know, going over in detail is where all the data is. So depending on how you like to consume your information, you can just stick with the chapter narrative or if you really want to dig into the data, go to the associated appendices, so. And we will be sending that prior to the August 8 meeting. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, team. That's fantastic. Things do a good job all the time. So any questions?
I'd like to add one request going forward on all reports, especially for, with the organic waste, is incorporating the word methane into the equation. Methane, especially from food waste, is the much more potent greenhouse gases, as I know all of you know. But so that everybody knows that somehow we are able to share that with the community. There's an importance to the food diversion as it goes to the landfill. I think that's a critical thing.
Thank you.
Just, I think related, I mean, one of the education pieces that we were talking about, how do you make it kind of more exciting and accessible? I really appreciate how Rust Belt writers, they tell you how much CO2 you diverted. So this is the word. And so it'd be a really cool way to sort of, I mean, the reward system of like, I'm contributing. It's really helpful, so I think, being specific about methane and then being specific about the pounds of food that you diverted in CO2.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? I, I, I have a comment for the grant opportunities. I'd like to see money for audits. The mayor's right, we have an enthusiastic group in South Yucca, but we also have inevitably people just throwing everything in those green bins. I cannot, I'm, I'm thinking opt-in is probably the way of the future. And I talked to Keith, he didn't like that. He didn't think he would. But those are dedicating people who are going to take the time to learn and do it right and then expand it out. I just feel like what I see is horrendous. But those are just my two cents. So auditing would be fantastic. Okay, so we have minutes from April 11. Do we have a motion? Someone please do. Thank you, Mayor. Second?
Second.
Okay. Second from Joyce. All in favor of the minutes? I, thank you, everybody. Is that all, Mayor?
That's all. So as promised, knock on wood, we will not meet in July. It is a tentative board meeting. I will keep, try and keep everything at bay that I can to hold off until August, so.
Thank you so much, everybody. Good to see you.
Enjoy your summers.
Thanks.
Oh, we have to adjourn.
Mission impossible.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
Motion, yeah, that's adjourned.